We have nobody to comment? Alright, good. Alrighty, well, I will call the order. The City of Ocean Shore's Planning Commission meeting. The Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty second. Time is two P M. I will start where they wrote. Paul. Dan.
Yeah.
Brian Warren.
Yeah.
Brian Bachman. In control?
Yeah.
Richard Rollins here. Alrighty, don't pause down. Next would be approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? On who do we need to approve the agenda? Who's thinking?
I'm sure.
Wait a minute.
Are we excited?
A minute.
Yeah.
I've moved my own new second.
Brian said it. Brian said it. All in favor? I think unanimous. Take a second here. Alrighty. We have a motion to approve the minutes. I've moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second is. Rickard. All in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous? Alrighty. Um. Before we go on to public comments, I want to let everybody know, I see Dawn has signed on. Uh, that Dawn sent me about five days ago, an RFP from the City of Aberdeen to take their zoning map and regulations and align it with their comprehensive plan. Dawn had found out in the Daily World, and I really appreciate Mr. Williams sending that. The reason I didn't include it in today's meeting is like after the agenda was published. So I don't like adding things after the agenda is published. So on the next meeting, I will include that public RFP. That interestingly enough, the point of contact is Lisa Scott. So she should know a lot about the City of Aberdeen, trying to get a consultant, basically to do kind of what we need to do. Which is to align their zoning with their recently approved comprehensive plan and shoreline master plan and all that sort of stuff. So I will, in the meantime, attempt to reach out to Lisa and see if they have a rough idea of the topic. The reason being is, we are sort of in the budget cycle right now. It may be a little bit late to get a wedge in that, but I didn't want to violate the Public Meeting Act by putting it on the agenda after the fact. So we can do it next week. And Dawn, well, not to make a public comment, I thank you very much for seeing that and sending it forward to me, I really appreciate it. So, public comments?
Yes, this was supposed to have been done back in two thousand and eight. And it's never been done by council, so I'm glad that Dawn was getting into this and sent me a copy of it also.
Mr. Williams, do you have a public comment?
Yeah, I wish I could have, uh, can you hear me okay? Yeah, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, John.
Okay, uh, I wish I could have got there today, I would have brought some copies, but I just happened to see it. Uh, it, it may be in, maybe on last Saturday, it was in Thursday's newspaper, but maybe on Saturday, so anyhow, you'll get it from, uh, from, uh, the chairman. And it just, it just looked very interesting and, uh, like I told John Martin when I sent it to him also, that, uh, that, that, when he can't go to a planning commission meeting without hearing some mention of things not being lined up. And I think this is, if you look at the page two and three of the, um, of the RFP, it'll explain exactly what they're trying to do. And it just looked perfect for the problems that I'm hearing about. So anyhow, that's about it, and I guess you'll see it next time. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. No other public comments. Um, I just want to bring that up before Dawn got on, because I would acknowledge that I had it, but I just didn't get it in time, so we'll go, we'll go from there. Um, no old business. Uh, I guess on the new business I'll start, I was notified almost two and a half weeks ago that from Pat, that he no longer can serve on the planning commission for multiple reasons, none of which that we need to make public. He just decided his time was done and his, uh, better use would be to resign his position. We all thank him for the work he has done, and an invaluable member, and it's gonna be really hard to replace. With that, we're gonna need to nothing hate a new vice chair before we start, go ahead.
No, I'm ready to nominate.
Okay, go ahead.
I nominate Ellen Dorman in the region. Before I speak to Ellen, there's, uh, of those of us remaining outside of Dan Bricker, she has the most seniority. Uh, uh, so she has perhaps the most experience, so I nominate Ellen Dorman.
I, I have to pass unfortunately because of family memory. But thank you.
We have any other nominations?
I nominate Brian Bachman.
Do we have a second?
No.
Do we need a second?
Yes, I'll say it, Brian. If Brian will accept, I can take it as Brian.
What a choice, he's sitting next to me. Alright, what does that entail? Would it?
Just being the chairman when I'm.
Okay, that's it.
And I'm always. Alright, so Brian, if it's any comfort, I was the vice chair for a year and never chaired meetings.
We'll have lots of available, guys. Alright, so, do we now vote?
Yes.
I guess we can vote, any other nominations? Not all in favor of Brian being the vice?
Oh, I do this. Never a best.
As soon as I thought this, I knew this was gonna happen. Alright, before we go to the next item, I did manage to sit down and talk to the mayor for almost half hour, forty-five minutes. Um, and then I want to go before this agenda item because of Fitz Wright in line, he basically, um, I'm trying to put this in all the proper leading. City council and city staff is very busy right now. Uh, they're in the middle of a budget cycle, which is consuming them. Uh, food trucks became a contentious issue and finally resolved. Uh, the Highdome Trail, as we all know, is running into some issues and they're in strong danger of potentially losing millions of dollars of grants because of inability to get easements and that sort of stuff. On top of that, uh, we are without a public works commissioner, and the city engineer has announced he's leaving to take another position. So needless to say, the city is a little bit overwhelmed right now. And, um, I think Marshall will tell you it's tough times right now with city staff, right?
It is, we're, well, we're still dealing with, you know, unprecedented development within the city. So without our own work to do, um, you know, we're trying to keep everybody else working too. So yeah, things will be a challenge in the next few months.
And at the same time, without a city engineer, when did Robin Luns say his last?
Uh, second week in October, I believe, sometime in that.
Yeah, so it's. Yeah, imminent, he will, you cannot replace the city engineer that quickly, especially. Uh, the American Works is still open, they're still working on that, so those are the, basically the top two positions in the public works department that are vacant. So the remaining city staff are gonna sort of head on responsibilities spread around them. And it's not gonna be easy for everybody going on. Combine that with the typical budget cycle and basically without saying it, the mayor said there's not gonna be a whole lot coming before city council from us unless it's really urgent, is probably the best way to put it, I'm trying to put it bluntly. Um, so unless we see something really important that has to be addressed before the first of the calendar year, with the budget cycle is done, that we're sort of just be working more on some long-term stuff, which is I kind of think I would set up to do. Well, I think we're in good faith with that. Uh, he said, oh, as far as minimum square footage and uh, the, what we try to call affordable housing, said we really need to stay out of calling things affordable housing because there's a bunch of state laws and regulations coming down specific to affordable housing that we don't want to get ahead of with something we're doing called affordable housing. He is willing to consider our recommendations on changing the code. But again, this is a significant content, potentially contentious change to the code, they prefer to wait till after the first of the calendar year. So we're gonna sort of leave that aside and we'll bring it back up uh, early after we start the next calendar year. Well, that's sort of where we are on that. Um, the second thing is, before we get into this, before we, um, start on these two important topics, we can't send emails to everybody on the planning commission and not violate Public Meeting Act if it's something you want us to discuss. So if you have an issue that you want brought to the planning commission, please send it to me in at least a week in advance, and I'll put it on the agenda. So if you think there's something we need to look at, don't email everybody on the planning commission unless it's already an item under discussion. If it's a new item, or trying to correct a perceived error in a previous item, please send it to me with your, um, with your discussion, and then we'll bring it up at the next planning commission I can get the agenda together for. And Sarah usually wants me to get it about a week in advance, and I'm pretty good at trying to meet that occasionally, I forget, but. So basically, if you want to bring someone up to the meeting about a week prior to me, make sure you get it to me and I'll bring it up. An email to all is not an appropriate way to add an agenda item to the management. So, back to what he said, he had to, three things he really would like us to look at over the fall. One of them is, and Fitz Wright in with this discussion, the gateway corridor appearance, cleaning it up, sort of the stuff we've already started on. Again, we don't want to use the term pyramid zoning because that brings into all sorts of other things that are going on. But he really wants us to focus on what we think we need to do to clean up the gateway district as defined in the land use map. And that's, you know, I asked him what he finds, he primarily concerned is Ocean Shore Boulevard, you know, down to about here, or down to Ace. A lesser concern, I'm not Point Brown, I meant to here, lesser concern Ocean Shore is what really doing that. The instance he brought up is that legally, the Dollar General went in there, it's a good store, it looks good, but we didn't require sidewalks. We didn't acquire, acquire particularly attractive landscaping and appearance. So if we have a little tighter code in the gateway district, we could have had a little more out of the developer who did uh, the Dollar Store, that's a great example, I completely missed it. So things like all future major renovations or new construction of the gateway district shall include, you know, sidewalks and attractive landscaping, that sort of stuff, and some of that's actually in, again, the comprehensive plan. So it's that sort of stuff we want to bring in. So, the, the first item of discussion works really well with what we were talking about, uh, with the mayor as his, one of his three priorities, and we'll continue that. The second thing he brought up again, and he keeps bringing it up to me, and I'm not sure how this is ours, but we'll figure out a way, is hike, is, uh, is pedestrian cycling safety. He really wants us to be, um, use the term, I think, blue city, which is new to me, I'd never heard of, I've started to look for it. Especially a city where people are more healthy, because they're unhappy, because they have the opportunity to bicycle, they have the opportunity to safely walk, and it's a higher quality of life with a longer life expectancy because it's a healthier environment. He really wants to see, one of his visions, and us helping him move the city towards a more cycling and uh, pedestrian firmly. And I understand we've got the whole issue of the downtown sidewalks. Different issue needs to go back differently, but there are other areas we can look at that, so I'm, I'm gonna come up with some ideas on that, and I'll bring that up, probably not the next meeting, the meeting after. The third thing he brought up, which is very interesting again, is nuisance and abandoned properties. Um, I brought it, and I asked him about it again, because there was a recent article that the City of Olympia has new ordinance requiring abandoned property owners to register and pay a fee. So I need, we could do some research and see what Olympia did. But the whole idea is, it's a way for the city to go to derelict property owners and say, listen, by our records or our impression is, you have not been on your property in a year. That's the definition they're using, if you don't visit your property in one year, then your property is now derelict, which is probably a good definition, if there's a few in town that would meet that. Um, then you need to register your property and pay a fee, and you automatically allow, because you are a registered derelict property, that means code enforcement is blowing your property. Which is another important thing, define more things, go ahead.
So my question specifically is a property next door to Dan, but those people are on that property, but they're not in the part of the property or the part of the structure that needs work, and so.
That wouldn't fall into the derelict property, that would fall into the nuisance property, which is a different issue.
That's a, that's a good point. Uh, so as we address those properties, we would address it as, as abandoned and nuisance.
Yeah.
And they could parallel, the, 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 the rules could parallel.
Yeah.
Uh, but something I think absolutely deserves to be done with that property and used, given us a, a creative outline about how to approach that.
Yeah, and I'll, and I will try in the next two weeks to do some work, sort of research into what the City of Olympia is doing. I just saw the news article, they're claiming success, and if their lawyer says by having your property declared derelict, that allows code enforcement to go on the property, then maybe I'll, I will say the same thing, because as you know, that's one of the restrictions right now. Is, it's right now, quote, quote, can only go next door and book, go ahead.
You do it door and still sees a piece of crap.
Yeah.
You can't do anything about it.
Well, the issue is, is that we'll, we'll learn from Olympia, Olympia has found that their version of code enforcement has to work more closely with their building official, and literally from a neighboring property say, I believe there is a hazard. And there's three things, it's, you know, disease vectors, structural, you know, disease vectors being pests, mice, rats, you know, structural, and then, um, squirm.
Yeah, that's what BB said, that you gotta get the, the building guy, but he's so busy, he's not gonna have her time.
Right, so it's basically if we can get the mayor's push, that he wants to sort of clean up the city from these properties. Well, and that was the third part, and I thought it was a good one, go ahead.
So just a comment that, uh, the mayor, not last night, but the meeting before, that there is a new guy coming to work under McGinnity, uh, that, that's where he is, building inspector, and he has, he's, he's had property here for a while, and he's starting to work in the next few weeks, uh, so there will be some, but McGinnity is retiring.
And according to the mayor, this new guy actually has experience in this particular area.
Roy already worked here.
What?
Roy already works here.
Well, he already, he's already working?
Okay.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that he'd already started.
Yeah.
What's the advantage of acquiescing to be a delinquent property if you run the risk of having a court enforcement officer come in your property?
It's not, it's not voluntary, you basically have to, it, it allows the city to ring the courts and say, you have not been to your property in a year, we declared your property, I haven't done all the legal research though, okay? But basically, the City of Olympia felt it gave them much more leeway and enforcement.
This is a, a move by the city to declare delinquency.
Yes.
But there, I don't care.
Yeah, that's part of it, well, part of it is registration. And what the article had said, and the interview person interviewed from the planning department of Olympia was, the mere fact that these property owners are having to register their property is inducing them to sell, and that's really what they want. You know, you don't want these people to sit on these derelict properties and do nothing. So you want an inducement for them to move on the properties, either fix it or sell.
Will that speed up getting a property cleaned up? Because I know the guy on, uh, I think it's Bass Avenue, he's been cited, he's been to court, and still nothing happens. The property is still a mess.
My memory of previous council discussions, that once you take the first step, the first giggle step, it takes a minimum of a year, uh, the, 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 the guy can, can jerk on the chain, uh, before the city can actually take mitigating steps.
Gotta be getting close to that now.
And there's several properties, you found that are nuisance properties. The difference is, we have two categories, you got nuisance properties, which are occupied or visited, and derelict properties, which are abandoned. And there's some of those in town.
Yeah, and this one would be a new.
A nuisance property, two different issues, two completely different avenues. Because there's a, like, as I understand, if we're even looking at the article, there's an expectation if you're a property, you'll at least see a one to here. And I guess that's considered in some certain of the fair expectation. If you don't visit your property in a year, at that point, it can be declared derelict. How do you prove that? The owner can say, I was here, you can see me, so I mean, that's, this is the stuff you get into, you get into those games. But I know a couple in town that have not been, because you can't get in there. Driveways blocked, there's vegetation, and they've just obviously been abandoned for, you know, four or five years.
But it's bad enough to have to drive past them, but if you live next door to them, it's so dirty to what you have to look at. Do you have a possibility of selling that property?
So those are the three things, and I think we're in, two of them we're excited about and gonna move forward on, the third one I'm gonna figure out how to do. Um, and it may be that I sort of just reach out to the community, ask some community members to come in, because this really is gonna take uh, police chief, public works, everybody involved, sort of talking about safe cycling. And it's probably gonna end up trying to budget for health cycle consulting at some point. I'm testing, more than we could ever do. But I think sort of just to get it started, to make it sort of a healthy community for safe cycling and all this sort of stuff. Because he's concerned, I counted, I was in and out of the house today doing, uh, trim, and I saw on Ocean Shore Boulevard itself, the most dangerous part in town, I saw seven cyclists in three hours, so it's not none. There are some out there, and it wasn't even the nicest day of the year, so, what happens there? Alrighty.
I would offer a comment as we go into the, uh, um, first section of the new business. And I absolutely, uh, um, understand how busy the city is, and that John doesn't want to put this on the city council table. But as I was preparing for this discussion and realized just how complex uh, the gateway corridor and getting the land use map to agree with the comprehensive plan, and then to translate that into zoning, uh, that's a subject that is going to take the planning commission months to work the details out. Uh, because it's, it's just a lot of complex things that, that interlead together, uh, so I'm glad that we're addressing this, uh, and I think that our timing is, is right on spot. Uh, but I wouldn't anticipate us being ready to present it to council, uh, until sometime early next year.
Yeah, and if, but what happens with this RFP, I mean, it's even easier because it's basically imported into an outside consultant, if we can get the city to support paying for consulting, but I will send, uh, compliment, when council member Scott emailed out that she has a budgeted amount, that at least gets something, I have no idea.
But I'll make one more comment on the RFP, and I'm, I'm glad, like you, that, that Dawn found that and, and shared it. Months ago, I took a stab at, if, if I were drafting that, uh, changing the codes, the zoning codes, and I found it overwhelming, I just don't know enough, uh, and, and, and I think that there, our code is so complex that, uh, I think that we can do things like the gateway corridor and the land use map and, and, and getting the land use and the, the, uh, comp plan in agreement. But to actually do a thorough job on the zoning codes is having professionals, uh, that can look at all those aspects. It's gonna be good.
The question is, have we hit any of the budget? So that'll be the question.
Exactly.
Because we're competing with rusted tanks.
Yes.
See, I did this when we, yes.
Yes.
Hey, I don't want pictures, alright, so, we're gonna start off a little bit talking about, and they're actually the same really, zoning in the business district, gateway corridor. Um, and Richard, you have the document that we included, and sort of briefly describe, um, what you're going through here, and again, focusing more on the gateway corridor than.
Yes, all, the focus will be gateway corridor, but it's my perception, uh, we put a lot of work into the comp plan, uh, but we, we never actually, with a couple of exceptions that I highlighted here in this document uh, that, that we've shared, we never actually defined the designation shown on the land use map adequately in the comp plan. And so my suggestion is, our first step is to, uh, define those, um, uh, designations, the land use map designations, define them in the comp plan and change the comp plan to reflect both assigned designation. And I provided a, a, a draft for us to talk about, uh, where I took the land use designations in blue. And said, this is the map designation, uh, this, this is what the code said, and this is how I would suggest modifying the code, uh, to fit the comp plan. Uh, so, the first section of that is the, the, the current three dot ten commercial land use categories, uh, and the, my intent showing that is that gateway corridor is, and, and services professional office are the only two that are really uh, uh, identified, and neighborhood centers and, and, uh, um, general commercial and commercial residential, uh, those aren't actually very well defined. And not all of them would correlate to an actual probably zone, like neighborhoods never, I think, if we get that and discuss that, would be an appropriate uh, permitted use in whatever zones. Uh, but let's start with, with the gateway corridor, and if we looked at, uh, the, the land use map, and, uh, maybe everybody brought their, their copies, that Sarah so, so generously gave us, like, to me.
There is one, and there's one there.
Yeah, and there's some larger ones there.
And, and I asked Sarah, when she comes back, if she would have a look at everyone's computer and even put them up on the big screen for having. Uh, um, if we don't all have it, but if, if we look at the, at the land use map, um, up in the top left corner, uh, that we've got the gateway corridor and whatever that is, charters or things, whatever that is. And then the, uh, um, the service professional is in the purple, that's kind of right in the middle between Ocean Shore Boulevard and, and Point Brown. Um, and as I was looking at the code in the B one, B two, B three, uh, current code, um, it's easy, there's, it makes some sense that the gateway corridor has a large number of aspects shared with B one. But would it make more sense to create a new zone that is specifically the gateway corridor? Uh, and, and along with that, another new zone that is specifically the, uh, the service professional office. Uh, because right now, that whole area in that chart tree, uh, this, this whole, this whole area here, that's actually all B one right now, pretty much, yeah. And, and so, so how would we define B one distinguished gateway corridor, or is gateway corridor uh, uh, just, we want to, in my, in my mind, if we define, this is what we want gateway corridor to be, how do we write that into a regulation? Uh, and it just seems easier to me if it is in fact its own sub-zone perhaps under the B one. Uh, I have seen other zoning codes, that's what they do, this is a major category, and there's a subcategory that, that this is a, a subcategory of the B one. And that's a part of our discussion, right, it's, it's, uh, it's a complex issue. I guess I would ask Marshall a question, how much B one is there outside gateway corridor? I don't, I don't see any, well, and, and that's a question I had.
Yeah, there's a, there's a mix in the, uh.
If, if we look down in this area, Marshall, and I can't, my, my color vision isn't good enough, that's R seven, are, are these R seven? And they're not.
Yes, they, correct.
I might, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, the areas identified as, um, service professional in the interior of division one along Anchor Avenue, Barnacle, and Ocean Court, that those are all B one that are on the interior outside of the gateway corridor. And then, uh, you know, the other.
Yeah, so, basically, the B one and the gateway corridor are almost coincidental.
Yeah.
Um, the only real exception would be the lot across from the post office, I guess. Which is.
Yeah, that's a, that's a special zone, uh.
That usual lot across from the post office?
Yeah.
Stuff B one?
It, it's, it is B one with, uh, with some R seven uses allowed or let them out there.
Well, yeah, because in general land use, we call that service professional.
Mobile.
Yeah. Commercial residential.
Yeah, it was, it was allowed to, that, that mobile homes would be allowed in that area.
Okay.
Um.
It's a bust, uh, rest of the mobile home area.
Had to do with the reason that it was purchased back in the day, and the owner at the time, uh, purchased it and had some agreement with the city or whatever, that that zoning would be applied. Had to do with the reason that it was purchased back in the day and the owner at the time, uh, purchased it and had some agreement with the city or whatever, that that zoning would be applied. So they they did a rezonant back and applied that to that lot, to that parcel.
Could you put the land use to kind of get a proper zoning map up on the screen?
Alright, so I guess what we're. What we really. The question we've got that we're talking about is one. I've read the gateway corridor at length, but I don't think the. The description in the comprehensive plan is pretty good for the gateway core. I will tell you, it says no, so no single family residential, which should be a change. Which is okay, by me, but it's something we can bring up, um. And. My larger issue is, is we look at. Uh, are we looking at, I guess the question is group, are we looking at saying? You cannot do new service professional in the gateway corridor. Because right now, some of our more attractive businesses happen to be service professional in the gateway corridor.
Well, the intent was down in the gateway corridor, but not on Ocean Shore's Boulevard or Point Brown.
Okay, but on Ocean. Some of the more attractive buildings unfortunately meet that, aren't so professional on that.
Yeah, but in future.
In the future, we would like to see those. Put onto the Menard Avenue's Martin Shoal.
And Shoal.
There's a Shoal, it's not Shoal, it's.
Keehorse.
So, so. A a thought, uh, and if if I understand the agenda correctly, that Dan is actually gonna go to talk about. Uh, about those specific B one and B two uses.
But no, not really, we're just talking generally aligning. We're about, Dan, what I had Dan on the agenda working with me on was just more general. Um. Land use element zoning map along.
Okay, so, so.
More of a general discussion, Dan, you were just gonna, we talked about and sent me that note.
This document that that we had like a month ago, or maybe, when I think it was brought back two weeks ago.
Right.
Did the three columns that show the permitted uses?
Yeah.
It's, it seems to me that it's appropriate to to look through some of those permitted uses for B one and B two. And say, do we want to? Keep those permitted uses. In the zoning code, uh, because those permitted uses directly reflect on what we intend to allow gateway corridor. Uh, so does it make sense to go through this table and say, yes, uh, we keep grocery and drugstores. Uh, but we don't keep uh, single family dwellings.
I think what we more wanna look at is, are we? Um. Are. The land uses in the comprehensive plan still. Appropriate. And then. Which of those specific areas do we want to address? With potential zoning change. Like specifically looking at the gateway corner, so I guess the question would be. I was trying to get to the, get to the answer is, they're really. The difference between. The typical uses and the permitted uses isn't that different. The typical uses are listed in the. Land use category in the comprehensive plan. So my question would be, why would we have to go back and look at? Um, picking. Permitted uses, or why would we just align the permitted uses with? The commercial land use typically uses. We've already said. The city has already said, this is what we want to see happen. In the gateway car.
And. I may be missing something, but I think that you just said what I just said. Uh, um, uh, that that. As we look at the B one, uh, the opening paragraph of of what B one is is intended for. And what its permitted uses are, uh, and how I agree that much of those fit into the cop plan. Uh, uh, gateway corridor description, um, but some of them don't, and. So it seems to me like those, uh, um. Uh, permitted uses need to be defined, and that's that, that's that's that. I've got a couple, I don't talk a lot, that 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 whole, that whole list of, I just, well, I've got it on my computer screen here. Uh, where where I took the land use maps in blue, the land use map designations in blue, and said, this is. What's currently in. The zoning code, so. So. Do you all have a copy of? Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda packet. Uh. Uh, when it starts off with the proposed formatted and edited three dot ten text. I don't know, we're gonna page you this, because I'm looking at.
Uh, page five of the agenda today. Page five of today's agenda.
So, so. We'll take a look at that and and see if. Uh, that needs to, if we need to modify. Those lists in that document. Is the gateway corridor is in that document. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
But you know, as we do that, and I don't think at this meeting. I would prefer that we. Unless the group wants to do it today, we actually look at a list of permitted uses in the gateway corners using your. Table at the start at the next meeting. I don't know if you will have a discussion, but I think part of that is what should be a permitted use. The first question though, is do we want to subdivide? B one or the gateway corridor into? Uh. The. Gateway corridor and the service professional office. Offices, because we. You know, right now, I guess I'm trying to get straight, we want to subdivide the B one zone into two separate zones. One. With, which is listed as the gateway corridor, where the typical uses, commercial hotels, residential. Mixed use associated assembly, and. The other being the side streets with the service professionals. So is that something that we as a group want to continue to pursue, I'm looking for discussion?
What's the objective? I don't understand it.
It was. It was in the original, when the comprehensive plan was passed.
The the objective in my mind is take the heart, the 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 lumberyard and the car wash. Off of Point Brown and put it on the side streets, uh, and or and 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 Seahorse. Um, um, and that's not something that happens anytime soon. But it's the long, long range view. Uh, and and I don't know where the lumberyard would go, but right now the lumberyard spans from Point Brown to to Seahorse. Um, uh, so, but. Our whole point with the comprehensive plan is saying, this is the future vision. And this comprehensive plan gives us the tools to move towards that vision. Um, so that's, that's the point, uh, and as I look at the land map. Uh, it makes sense to me. That the shark cruise is gateway corridor and the purple uh, is is uh, uh, service professional. And it it makes sense to me that that would be B one set category gateway. And B one subcategory, uh, service professional, uh, and over time, the 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 lawyer's office, uh. Um, I can't think of his name right now. But Valdez, that that office. At some future date, as it's changed its hand and whatever, that would move onto Menard or Seahorse.
I'm, I'm just not sure what the advantage of doing that is, I mean, I understand lumberyard and car wash, they preexist even. Our incorporation, but thinking. Why do we, why are we trying to set separate? Fairly similar land uses in a different neighborhoods. What?
So what? The, what you're pointing. In my mind, when we had this discussion way back when when Linda Witcher was 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 assisting. Uh, the whole cop plan effort, it was to make the downtown corridor a much more attractive. Corridor, and 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 your point, Thorn, I think is exactly taken, as I drive around through other cities. It's common to see lawyers offices on the main drag, it's it's common to see, uh, uh.
State offices.
I mean, I mean, the type of. Land use. Has no correlation to what the building looks like.
So are we saying that we don't agree with the comprehensive plan?
And 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 and, Jerry, that's an exactly.
I know.
And is is is. And you can vote as a particular, I mean, that's what we need to, the city. I wasn't here with the comprehensive plan was developed, I, and I was just here for the passing. It was passed, and this is what the comprehensive plan says as approved by. The city council.
Well, when we did it, we were saying, okay, you got a clean, there's no buildings there at all. What do you want the city to learn? It's a future plan, that was it. So that was our vision.
Right, I think the main. The the flaw of the plan was. Different types of businesses don't make them. Downtown look any different. Unless you regulate what the, what the appearance is, rather than the type of business that is. Well, a restaurant can look like a professional office just by decoration. But to to say, well, we're gonna have all the professional buildings in the, in the middle of town, doesn't make them look any better or worse, it just. Doesn't, I mean, older cities, they haven't, they've been mixed together.
I I think the whole idea when we were looking at this. Is the vision for the future and that eventually that car wash needs to come after Point Point Brown.
Yeah.
Eventually. The the Lender store needs to move somewhere else. I personally agree with a lot of those service businesses, attorney's office. Of a very nice addition. To the corridor. But we have, we have got to look at what do we want way down the line, it may take us a long time to get there because. They're not gonna go away overnight, but we need to say in the future, this is all we can do there.
And and I agree with Eleanor, and and I agree with what what you and Thorn are just saying. That maybe it's not that we need to to rezon. The 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 B one zone, what we may need to do is change the comprehensive plan, because there's. I personally would rather see the car repair shops. On the side streets, whether they're on the main street, uh, but I have no problem with the dentist office and and the lawyer's office and real estate offices. Uh, those are attractive uses, and if I'm coming to shores as a visitor and thinking about buying. A a property, uh, it's nice to be able to say, oh, here's here's some of the prime of of real estate offices, you know. And. In my experience driving through communities, it's normal to see those kinds of businesses on the main drag. So, yes.
I think that's covered in, in the first uses, the commercials, don't retail service. Service. That's a.
We specifically list.
It it doesn't say specifically, it it could, it's a lawyer's office, but then also the vision was. So right now, our major revenue is from, is from building. But our second or third or whatever it is. Is tourism, and what do you want the tourists to see when they come in the gate?
I I agree.
And that was the intent, what you want to make look like the services for homeless residents. But. The tourists.
I think everybody's dream is to make it look more like a town than whatever the heck it is now.
Right, exactly.
But. The uses we're describing don't necessarily make that happen, parents we should describe may, as an example of, uh. The, let's say, a forms based code would probably do it, a forms based code is like Seabrook. The type of code we have now is regulated to uses rather than appearances. And if we want to make it look better, we should say so. But we don't make it look better by saying, uh. The land, the particular use that a neighbor, that a building is put to. Makes it look better, it doesn't really, just.
Well, even the.
No correlation.
Right now, you go down. You go down Point Brown, and there's some places that look like, you know, you tore it down, that are.
Yeah, and we can't, we can't move the car wash, we can't move the lumberyard, they're, they're in, they're in there, it can get bought up and. Turned into something, sure.
But I also, Thorn, there is a basic set of. Permitted uses that we can start with. And. The clearly, we said we don't want a car wash, we don't want auto repair. On the main street.
Okay, I don't disagree with that.
So that's what you're, you're saying that, you know, doesn't matter hill of beans, but the land uses, that's not true. What I think what we've done is we may be misdefined narrowly.
There's a fine line between one and two here.
I got it.
Which I don't find yet.
Okay.
Financial versus real estate, what's the difference?
So my comment kind of directly applies to this discussion here in that, what if that car wash was? Completely torn down and the new thing that was there was one of those pink elephant, like full service car washes or something like that. Would we still, and and what we're looking at is a different, it's a different look, same function. Are we still saying we don't want a car wash?
I don't think they're applicable under the current code anyway, I think the current code would not allow them.
Okay. Uh, it would, it'd be one. Because when we're talking about, when we're talking about tour tourists that come in here, okay, so. You come, you come in, I G A, there's the beach, there's the hotels, and on the way out, there's a car wash. I've been a lot of tourists use that car wash to, to, you know, rinse the dirt off their car on the way out of town, you know. I mean, we're talking about convenience and what's already there, I'm not saying that. I personally, I think the the car wash is eventually gonna go away, because somebody who owns that lot is gonna be. Like, hey, I can sell this for X amount of dollars, and somebody that just tears it down and builds something else. But, okay, I agree, but there's no. There's nothing wrong with us saying that in the gateway corridor, we don't believe you should have mini storage. Repair shops, contractors, auto services, light industry, perhaps.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think all those things are currently driven under R one anyway, I don't.
They're prohibited under our, under B one anyway.
Storage is a B two function, but yeah, uh, I originally understood it being a.
Right there, um.
Yeah, it falls under a conditional use as well.
Any, any, any outdoor usage business is B two. And and those businesses are there now, preexistent.
I don't think auto repair is prohibited in B one.
Uh, I I believe it is.
It's, it's not, it's a.
It's not a listed, it might be a conditional use, I believe it's more, I I believe it fits into the B two.
Oh, I I think it should be.
Yeah, and I think that's what this current zoning code, um, pushes it that way.
So. In my mind, the biggest distinction between B one and B two is B two is geared towards more outdoor uses. It's not explicitly outdoor usage, but in my mind, the ocean forest is a B two, it's not a B one use. It's an outdoor function, uh, uh, light equipment rental might be considered more of an outdoor use, on or not, you know. And and that's the whole point of this discussion, what is, what is the group consensus here? Uh, and 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 the discussion helps us. Define. What we individually. Think it should look like, but for me, B two is 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 Columbia is a B two. B two is a B two, uh, storage units are B two, uh, uh, because I don't drive down the main drag. And with the, and and roll of storage units, as I see on the south end of Point Brown, that that's not an attractive. Uh, uh, that doesn't tickle the tourist.
But the issue, I'm going back to those, we've got this list in the comprehensive plan for good or bad. Right, so if we're saying we're gonna align the comprehensive plan and zoning. We stumbled across our first. Issue with resolving that. So do we change the comprehensive plans? Or do I just let it sit and as we do the, as we work to get a zoning update, make the zoning align more, more lean, sort of reasonable?
I think we change both the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, the zoning plan, and all three of the comprehensive zoning and and land use plans. Uh, and and take a little here, give a little there, push a little somewhere else, uh, so that they all three come into alignment. I think it's not, it's not a case of of a binary choice, it's it's some combination of. Uh, and this discussion is helping, in my mind, clarify what we all utilize. That we want in the downtown corridor. And what we want in the B two, which for me is Menard and and Seahorse. But right now, Menard and Seahorse is all B one. Right, and maybe, maybe they need to be zoned B two.
I.
He or just B two.
He or should be two. I don't, uh, I, my office. Very familiar with that street, um. I don't, I don't think. Uh, considering what's already on the street. Um, zoning at B two would be kind of. Out of the ballpark for for the center part, uh, mostly there is, you've got, you've got empty. You've got, you've got empty lots that are mostly, they're mostly in the water. Uh the ones that are not developed yet, uh and then you've got. Multi-family and and then professional offices and that's some B two, uh uh like the uh the. Yeah, I don't, I don't really understand though how this, how this is gonna work, so like, let's say, for instance, my office is on Menard. Be turned into B two, does that mean when I sell it, I have to sell it to somebody that's gonna use it for a B two function?
Well. If B two, if B two is 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 designated, that there's a crossover of professional offices in. Professional offices are permitted use in both B one and B two, but there's no change.
Yeah, but my next door neighbor is is the uh the uh. There's three condos upstairs and and then downstairs is a Amazon fulfillment center. How do you classify that? So there's three people that live upstairs that are there year round and and a warehouse downstairs.
I would classify that as a commercial residential.
So is that, is that B two?
And 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 that could then be a permitted use. In a B two.
Right now, B two allowed all uses. Used to, that that Menard actually used to be B two about twenty years ago. Only it was changed.
We're trying to figure out in my mind. We're getting the big picture piece of. I think we're coming slowly to a consensus, there's a few uses we consider incompatible. With the gateway part. Go ahead, and now, then now the rest of it is, what else do we need to clean up in the gateway corridor?
So so the, what you just said triggers a thought in my head, that's why I love discussion. That maybe we're approaching this from the wrong direction and maybe a better direction. Is what are the incompatible uses that we consider in 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 a downtown corridor? Instead of defining what we want to permit, define what we don't want in the downtown quarter. In the in the gateway corridor. And then the only choice left for that business as time evolves is that those. Undesirable gateway corridor businesses will slowly move into a B two. Zone use.
And I think, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong. That I'm thinking the same way and that what we're supposed to do is create a vision of how do we want that to look in the future. So we define how we want that to look, what zone it would fit into. Um and eventually the things that don't belong there will go away and then we. Change the comp plan to match the vision. Is that.
Eleanor, you said exactly right. Uh um and and that's why when when we started this discussion, I think this is gonna take months to figure out. Because it it's it's a complexation, we're not gonna solve it in two hours on on this meeting. And again, you know, being a planner like Marshall in a previous life in different locations is. We have an extreme mismatch. Throughout. This town of use there, I mean, the fact that high grade asphalt is. Quarter mile from you, it's frankly stunning. You know what I mean?
Yeah, well, there's.
So do we, do we say, throw our hands up and say, we're just gonna live with it?
There's another building like right next to her.
Yeah, to hide. That's a stinky operation which brings us fuck at the end of the day. You know, and just other things that are strange in here. So isn't our remit to try to clean that up in the future, I think Danny said, yes, that's what we really need to do.
Yeah, but I have a real hard time opening back up the comp plan.
I understand.
I really do, and we spent months and months and months on that land use alone. And if we open it back up. We're we're gonna spend months and months again.
So what's the path of least resistance?
Is this page five? Well, this disagrees already with the present zoning.
Yes, yes, that's that's been my point, since January, when this was approved.
Then if under service professional offices, we are, across our those things that don't presently agree under B one. That takes care of half of them here, I'm not sure what the term contractors or auto services means exactly, but. Nonetheless. Recommerical residential, long-term vehicle storage, mini storage. Uh auto services are perhaps are all presently not allowed under B one as it is. We don't have to change anything, but maybe the comprehensive plan as far as these words go.
That's, yeah.
If we just narrow down the future vision. Um. For the gateway corridor, we're not gonna go in and change a huge portion of the the comp plan. We're gonna say set in stone, here's this vision for this one particular area. And we're just gonna align the comp plan up to show that vision. I mean, I thought we were all about, what do we wanna do in the future and how do we get there? And I don't see any other way to get there.
Yeah, I mean, we can't say, nothing can be changed in my opinion. But we also, I think what we need to do. For the next. Meeting, and I'll try to really get it in there is. Include the B one permitted uses and I'll do that, one of us will do that, the B one permitted uses. The B two permitted uses compared with. The commercial land use categories, now you sort of did that before, but not all the way.
Right.
Sort of a way to kind of just separate lists.
Right.
As to then say, all right. Maybe there are a few things in current code. That are permitted use that shouldn't be according to the comp plan, but I do have real concerns about. The past comp plan. Um. By carving out services, professional offices. We've created a much larger conflict. Within the B one zone.
Go ahead, so so ripping off what Dan said and and what you just said. That I was fair to you on the planning commission when we were discussing those subjects.
Yeah.
Uh um. Uh and my understanding, I understand so much more now than I did then. That if we were discussing that right now, I would have advocated for something different than we. Created, and so I just agree with Dan, that that I I think that it's absolutely appropriate. Uh not to address the whole comp plan, but to address the the three, three dot ten. Uh portion, the commercial portion of the existing comp plan. And and it's complex, as I've said from the beginning of this discussion, but it's, it's a, it's a bite sized chunk. Uh and. Uh to emphasize again, there are some. The comp plan itself needs to be tweaked a little bit, uh and and the 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 zoning. Definition needs to be tweaked a little bit, and perhaps the land use uh designation. Um as I look at this, then I go back to the purple, to the to the the service professional. Uh do, does that need to be a separate category, because as Brian just pointed out, uh um. His office fits just fine into my concept of the gateway corridor, uh but the car wash. So so maybe part of the change is that the service professional. Uh in right in the smack center of the gateway corridor, maybe that just becomes gateway court, all gateway corridor. Instead of this distinction.
Yeah.
Uh up here and and that's easy adjustment, uh and as Doris pointed out, uh adjusting the narrative. Both on the list of permitted and conditional uses and the opening paragraph in the zoning code for B one two.
Go ahead. Um. In. This area, uh let's see, this area over here, there's like that hole, there's like this huge. Yeah, it's B one, um so, which is retail commercially, right?
Yeah.
There are, there's all kinds of apartment buildings in this area too.
Yep. And and so one of the thoughts that I have thought is, is fifty years from now, should those apartment buildings? Still be in the gateway corridor or or do we write the code? Uh on. Uh the code and the complaint so that ultimately. Those go away, just like I hope the car wash goes away, and they are, or if they stay there. That they are a s- uh a a second floor. Use of a commercial space.
Have you driven around that area?
No, not very much.
But even though the issue, again, this is today, this is twenty thirty, forty or ten now, and is the city, what I'm basically saying though is it. Whether or not you guys knew this, and this was pretty shocking to me, when you adopted the comprehensive, basically eliminated residential use. Residential uses unless they're the second floor above retail.
We did though that, we did it purposely.
It was intentional. Purposely, and the city in council voted to endorse it.
Yes, they did.
I mean, we consider it bemoan all we want, but basically, by going back and saying, no, we're gonna allow future residential. Um.
So in the downtown Ocean Shores area, the. The comprehensive plan. Aims aims to remove residential from the area.
It means you can't build a single family toilet.
No.
Single family. Or or multi-family.
Or multi.
Or you can't build a residential only.
Residential.
Residential.
Transient rental motels that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So in the comprehensive. That's the thing that I see is the biggest, uh the biggest sticking point is like along Menard, there's a lot of, along Menard and what's the street behind Menard?
Anchor.
Is it? Um those, there's a lot of. In that area, there's a lot of transient rentals that have like people turning their buildings into transient rentals.
Yep. And if it is a. We we don't actually qualify, we say motel, we don't say transit, right, okay, so that's, oh. That's a gap, it says hotel, motels. Go ahead.
So so. In what are the iterations as I was thinking through this process? Uh that if, for example, commercial residential. Uh was a permitted use. In the B one, a commercial residential is defined uh in the comp plan as second story. Over over business use, uh and so commercial residential wouldn't be a a um. It wouldn't be a zoning designation, it would be a permitted use designation, just like neighborhood center. Uh as I really think about neighborhood center, uh it's, it's not its own zone, it's not its own specific use. It's a permitted use that could be allowed. Even in a residential zone, I'm thinking about a seven eleven as I drive through Aberdeen. And and in my mind, that seven eleven would qualify as a as a neighborhood commercial. Uh our our little community strip mall as the little strip mall on the uh. East side of Ocean Shores Boulevard on the south side of the four way stop sign. You know, a little strip mall like that, I would think would would qualify as a neighborhood commercial. But the bigger mall on Chatham Amer, on the north side of Chatham Amer and the four way stop sign. Maybe that crosses that line or or not, but a six grid mall like you see, you know, you're going down I five. Uh we don't want that in the downtown corridor, so. I'm, I take a lot of words to say that that uh um. Some of these land use map designations would be better if they're properly defined in the comp plan three dot ten. As permitted or conditional uses rather than as a separate zoning issue.
That's. Starting with that point, the issue we've got though is we have commercial land use. Categories that are nowhere in the. Unfind, right? So you know, one of the issues we need to do is either get rid of them from the land use.
Where the 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 commercial. The general commercial. The the verbiage in the current, well, B two. Says that B two is general commercial.
What I'm saying is, we've got these. One, two, three, four, whatever.
Right.
Not all of them are in the comprehensive plan, correct? It's my question, I wasn't here then, was that? A known omission or is that?
I think that was an inadvertent omission. I I remember having a discussion with Linda about should we neighborhood uh uh neighborhood. Uh what's the, the? What's the? The neighborhood commercial, the 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 little way that they type thing, that that isn't in the adopted comp plan. That. It is a. Um. It it's designation should have been elevated. In the same status that the gateway corridor is, uh so that it is clearly defined, what what is a gateway commercial? Um and and in my draft, you're with the with the blue landing smart designation. Uh never, yeah, never a commercial, anyway, in in that draft, I'm, I I say just that, but maybe that should be a permitted use. And that, and I'm asking Marshall this question, would that then make sense? That if somebody wanted to put a neighborhood commercial. And I'm picturing that little block of shop right in inner order, would that be a permitted use in our. Three, four, five, six, seven zone. Now, would it make sense to have a a neighborhood commercial? Cause that's the intent when we write, what it says, a neighborhood commercial provides for neighborhood oriented convenience businesses with smaller parts or other public spaces. That seems to me to to fit into a residential zone. But.
It it doesn't, and. If I look back at the um the current zoning map, you'll see that there were some business designated properties scattered out. Uh amongst the Rs, the intersection of Marine View Drive and Ocean Shores Boulevard. Has a large tract of land there that was uh zone commercial, uh B one, I believe, or B, maybe B two. I think B two, because I thought you could put a gap in there if you wanted. Same thing uh halfway down uh on either side of Ocean Lake Way, you've got some uh commercial designations there. You know, looking back at what the, what the fathers were thinking is that maybe they wanted to provide for some of this, what today's. Comp plan and and land use designation map would call that neighborhood commercial. Um why they didn't just dovetail those um. And and make it like, I like your concept of including some of the things that are on the land use map. As a permitted use and maybe take them off of the land use map, so we have, it would be nice to have one of these documents be the guiding document. And I haven't, out of this discussion today, I haven't figured out if you guys wanna lean on the map. If you wanna lean on the comp plan or if you wanna lean on the zoning code that we have today. Um you've put more time based on what I know about what Dan and the rest of the crew did over the past couple of years before I came on as the planner. There was a lot of thought went into the comp plan. So does it make sense to, you know? Try to bring the other things in line with the comp plan, meaning the zoning ordinances? And and the land use map? Did you guys try to to? Get the map to coincide with the comp plan, did you guys do much work with the map?
I don't remember how much work we do, but I would think that. The most prudent thing would be to take anything that is not on the land use map. Off those.
That would make sense to me as well.
I I'm not sure.
Anything that's not here, take it off here.
It.
So like the uh neighborhood commercial, we don't have anything that. Just get rid of it.
But uh but I still like the idea of defining your neighborhood as commercial in the comp plan. And and having neighborhood commercial as a permitted use. Wherever it's appropriate.
We can't have it both ways.
It it becomes, becomes just like any other permitted use in in the commercial zone, uh um. As long as, as long as this defines what it is, and this definition defines it pretty nicely.
Right now, our seven, our eight and our nine order have conditional use permits for neighborhood commercial as it is.
Okay. Uh um and I I although I've read those codes so many times, I don't remember. Specifically what it says, so how how are those zone? What's the verbiage? Uh for for neighborhood commercial.
This is the limited, the condition is retail, limited retail and service. Commercial uses that serve the immediate resident community. And do not over the overall character of the immediate resident community, that permit, traditionally used in our seven eight and nine.
So that'll be equivalent of the neighborhood commercial.
And and and.
Anywhere in those zones, basically.
Right, and and so 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 maybe Dan's definitely correct, we just make neighborhood commercial off the land use map because it's already identified. In 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 the code.
I think it's more of an overlay of a conditional use because it doesn't lay out specific lots, it says. That zone. Whereas the other others areas. Whereas the other, others uh areas are designated by specific geographical uh.
So I think, here's where we like to go, this probably takes care of both one end of the last two geniuses. Want to, we, next meeting, we wanna, if it's not on, we wanna focus sort of, I I would like, well, this is the discussion on the land use map, okay? Two, two items, one, if it's nowhere on the map, it should come off the map. Second item, if it's not defined anywhere, then we need to define it, and we've got some of those too. I agree with that. I think those are probably, Dan, would you agree the two tasks we need to do?
Yes.
Because I think we need to make the land you map, land use map is the broad vision. And then we're gonna have this discussion about getting rid of service professional. Or getting rid of that block of service professional. So the third part of my view of looking at the land use map is the specific blocks we may wanna rethink.
Um, you guys have some thoughts about, we have this resort tourist um designation of. The land use map that's basically that south end block of condominiums that that are along the ocean right there.
Yep.
Um it's not defined, I mean, it could fall into another one of those categories of, it's not defined, it's not being used, it's not defined in code. Um do we pull it from the map, or is that one of those things that we think is a good idea? And should, and and should we define it and? Apply it to those properties where the concept of the land use map had it designated?
That's what I think is the appropriate discussion, that's, that's why I said I wanna go both ways, if it's nowhere on the map. We agree, we get rid of it, if it's on the map and it's not defined, we either keep it and define it. And then the third is out in particular areas on the map we need to rethink.
All right, so a a couple of comments on just specifically. B three is defined in the zoning code, but there's no B three designated. I understand on the map, uh um and in my mind, the designation of resort tourists. This could be free description on the existing code. Uh um but if we named the resort tourist as B three, so we take that. That block down here, which is what Marshall was just talking about, and said, okay, well, that's, that's B three. Now you have just opened the door to allow homeless shelters in that area, and I don't think we wanna do that.
Well, yeah, I don't want us.
So 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 we could have uh uh the resort uh, the resort tourist. Uh not defined as a commercial zone. And I don't know how that would be worded because the definite current B three definition uh talks about little, little. Gift shops and and maybe little mini-marts and and that kind of stuff, which are commercial use. But there's, there's a sticky widget in there about how we define.
I don't think, I don't think fear of homeless shelters is that is. Something that's real, and that I do, I completely agree, I think you keep on going back to homeless shelters in that area, that nobody's gonna build a homeless shelter there. It's not gonna happen. There's, that problem is way too valuable.
Maybe there's, there's no, there's no services, there's no bus service, there's no, there's no restaurants, there's no, there's no people.
Yeah, there's no.
And 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 that's why I like discussion, because those are all valid points.
Yeah, and we also, if we're gonna look at that, we also need to look at where that is, because right now, we, all we've done is taken a bunch of single-family homes and have picked up any condos on the east side of Ocean Shore Boulevard. You look at the general land use map?
Yeah.
We shaded the wrong area, because the condos are actually around the bend.
Well, they're, they're both, I mean, there's.
Yeah, there's, there's two.
There. Yeah, World Park is is, oh, on this side, you're right, no, I don't know.
No, there's condos in here.
Yeah, no, yeah, you're right, I was, I think.
So we may wanna also look at where this, where the land use map has become overcome by events. There's, there's nowhere to build resort tourists on the east side of Ocean Shore Boulevard. So I'll take it off a single family.
Does the map show that resort tourist on the east side?
Yeah.
Or should just be the west side?
Should be the west side, so these are the adjustments I want to start working on, is everybody agreeing? This is kind of what we could do, and let's focus on getting the general land use map. And maybe if the mayor can muck up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, because that's how much Aberdeen has budgeted, thank you. Then the consultant can help us align the land use map and zoning.
Was B three ever geographically defined?
No, no, there is no B three.
How did we, I mean.
It's in code, but it's never been come out of the map.
We never said where it would be.
No.
How did the color happen?
What?
How did the color division nineteen nineteen eight happen?
It's identified on the land use map, but it was not defined on the zoning map or within the code. It actually, it is defined within the code, but it has not been defined or identified.
It has not been given.
It's not on the zoning map. It has been on the land use map, but it's not on the zoning map.
A lot of people have said this resort tourist should be B three.
And I tend to agree with that.
And we just.
My full one had a personal state in my area for. Watched it, we never, well, the comprehensive plan picked an area for it, apparently.
Yes.
But nothing, nothing, nothing else did.
That that whole area, the whole area down around the the Marina and and Damon Point. Uh in my mind, that would all fit in that resort tourist area, and I would much rather see that. That big twenty-one acre block uh uh and where where point round curves into um Review Drive. Uh that, all of that area around the Marina, all of that area, area just west of David Point. I would like to see that as as a resort tourist uh and and build on on the little, those little uh uh overnight. Rental dwellings and where is it, the Collins Inn, that has a particular rasp. Uh and and that makes sense to me to be uh uh a resort tourist.
Yeah, just as that.
Uh anything that's close on the waterway.
It pretty much already is though.
Yeah, but it's not, it's listed as.
Well, he has, man, there's been a long way session.
Well, general commercial, general land use, I'm trying to get what that general land use color is supposed to be, they weren't, so I think, and and so that's. So all right, so I think we have our goal, I'll try to figure out how to get this, and I'm also gonna try to. I'll figure out what'll be on the agenda, may or may not, I think, there are like properties on it, that will be part of the research with Olympia. And I will definitely send the RFP out as part of the agenda for the consultant to do exactly what they're trying to do. And I will send a mayor copy of the RFP and then, we're not, we're not a budget, I don't know, that would be your budget, right? Um, I don't. I don't know who the city staff department would be. For that sort of thing, but. Probably you, because it's Lisa and Aberdeen.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm thinking, all right, so that was, what is always, do we have? The next meeting is September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, and I have who the note taker is. Here, after one point. Where is it? That is Dan. Let's bring her here, you're up.
I'll be traveling.
You're not gonna be here?
No.
All right, Richard, it falls to you. I know you've picked them up a lot recently, but that's all right, I won't make you do it twice.
It's October twenty-fifth, and we did.
Um the next meeting is.
No, I'm just asking.
Nine points, yes, it was.
Is it, okay. I'm gonna be traveling that day.
Okay.
So I may not send you in to be here at that meeting.
On the twenty-fifth?
Dominating a backup.
On the twenty-seventh? On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, you may not be here, I understand.
Yeah, so so you may, may want to.
I'll, I'll be there.
If I'm not able to be there.
Yeah, Richard's down here and Brian's down here, in my mind.
No, never.
Twenty-seventh, I'm here, I was asking about October twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay. Well, the call is four, right?
Right, wait. Yeah, okay.
So when's your, when's your next meeting? Next meeting is the twenty-seventh.
I put that in the assemblies.
Next meeting is the twenty-seventh of October, and the note taker will.
September.
September.
Sorry, I can't.
And because Dan will be here, this commissioner Wells will step up. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm most injured.
Can I say?
All favor.